Mag-break tayo, mag-break, mag-executive session tayo sa loob ng lounge. Habang papakainin na rin natin ito mga naiwan dito sa...
Hindi po ba, Mr. Chair? Napusin ko lang ang ating... Uh, can I just?
So, CIDG, you have any update? You have the floor?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I go-
Today, Honorable Chairman of this committee, Senator Ronald de la Rosa, sir, and today, other honorable senators.
Ang galing lang, sa bilis na-
Hindi po ba, Mr. Chair? Napusin ko lang-
Last first hearing, the director of CIDG is General Pero. Now, ikaw na naman.
Yes, sir.
So, retire na si Pero?
Yes, sir.
So, matayas si Pero kay, naglulusot siya sa problema na ito.
Yes, sir.
Ikaw ngayon ang uh, tatanggap sa kanyang problema. Dahil?
I'm happy to receive that challenge, sir.
Thank you. That's what I need from you.
Yes, sir.
You should be very brave enough to handle all these problems.
Yes, sir. I've been with the CIDG for a long time, sir. Uh, I am Police Brigadier General of the City of Cruz, the newly designated acting director of the Criminal Investigation and Detection Group. I just assumed my position, sir, last March 2, uh, this year, and I'm going to present to you the updates of the investigation that the CIDG has conducted for the thirty-one missing persons.
Thirty-one?
Missing persons, sir.
For last count natin, thirty-four, di ba?
Yes, sir, but uh, we are only handling six cases wherein thirty-one persons.
Oo, pero okay, babayaan 'yung uh, 'yung uh, two cases na involving tatlong na victim.
Yes, sir, we are-
Isabong related rin yon, di ba?
Yes, sir, we are also coordinating with the other PROs which are handled-
I suggest, hawakan mo na, ano 'yung sabi naman nga, C.P.N.B. Hawakan ka lahat 'yan.
We'll do, we'll do that.
Yeah, hawakan mo lahat 'yan. Continue.
Yes, sir. Uh, there were, there are six cases being handled by the CIDG involving thirty-one missing persons coming from the provinces of Bulacan, Rizal, Quezon, Laguna, and Manila. And these cases happened in the premises of cockpit arenas. And one in Manila, four in Laguna, and one in Batangas. For the incident that happened on January thirteen, twenty twenty-two in Manila Arena located at Santa Ana, Manila, we would like to inform this honorable committee that we have a breakthrough in our investigation. A vital witness gave his statement that he saw how the victims were held and loaded by security personnel of Manila Arena in a gray van parked at the basement of the said arena. The witness is currently in a safe and secured environment being guarded by the CIDG. There are fourteen persons involved in this case that the witness implicated and personally identified by six suspects and eight are still unidentified. For the incident believed to have happened in Santa Cruz, Laguna, on January thirteen, twenty twenty-two. Considering the statements of their families that victims went to Santa Cruz, Laguna, cockpit arena on the said date, but failed to return home and remain missing until this day. And despite being missing, bank withdrawals from the ATM account of one of the victims, Melbert Santos, was recorded at DDO Lipa City Branch and is now being investigated by the CIDG. The person captured in the CCTV footage who withdrew money using the said ATM account is considered as one of our persons of interest and subject for manhunt operation by the CIDG.
So, you mean to say manhunt operations identified na rin yon?
Well, sir, uh, that's just the word that I use, but uh, we are actually identifying and when, once we identify, of course, we have to take appropriate actions on how we take custody about this person or file appropriate charges, in course.
Okay, continue.
For the six missing persons with last known whereabouts in Royal Octodome in Lipa City, Batangas, on January six, twenty twenty-two. The investigation is going on and we have two persons of interest. For the five missing persons with last known whereabouts in Santa Cruz Cockpit Arena in Santa Cruz, on December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, the investigation is going on and we have two persons of interest. For the six missing persons with last known whereabouts in Santa Cruz Arena in Santa Cruz, Laguna, on May eleven, twenty twenty-one, the investigation is going on and we have one person of interest. For the four missing persons with last known whereabouts in Santa Cruz Cockpit Arena in Santa Cruz, Laguna, on April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, the investigation is going on and we have filed obstruction of justice against one, Brinton Gineros Reto Stok, and we have three other persons of interest. These are the updates of our investigation and we are conducting continuous backtracking to gather more evidence and witnesses for the eventual solution of these cases. And uh, we assure, sir, the honorable committee and of course, the Philippine people that the PNT will pursue this investigation to its fullest, leaving no stone unturned until we ferret out the truth and serve justice. Thank you, thank you very much, your honor.
Sir, Chairman.
Yes, thank you, General Lucio Cruz.
Just one, uh, one or two questions. Are you ready to file cases before the prosecutor, uh, refer the case or cases to the, with the prosecutor's office?
Uh, yes, sir, we are now filing appropriate case against the identified six persons
Yeah.
in Manila Arena and uh, we'll be filing uh, kidnapping with the serious illegal detention permissible under Article two-six-seven of the revised penal code.
Yes, so we are understood by the victims' families, ano? You cannot anymore conduct arrest based on rule or law entry, di ba? Situations arrest. It's no longer proper.
Yes, sir.
Pursue these people and arrest them. You have to wait for the issuance of the corresponding warrants of arrest.
Yes, sir.
Kung makakaroon ng uh, warrants of arrest.
Yes, sir.
In the meantime, you will refer these cases before the prosecutor's office and let the preliminary, preliminary investigation proceed, di ba?
Yes, sir, uh, that will be filed regularly before the uh-
Direct filing.
City Prosecutor's Office of Manila, sir, and uh, there'll be preliminary investigation to be conducted and subpoenas will be sent to uh, the identified six suspects.
Yeah, sumo says na lang atatanggapin nila from the prosecutor.
Yes, sir.
Sa mga intindihan ng mga pa-victims' families, pa-kasi bibilang, walang ginagawa 'yung PNB. Because you're not authorized under the law, under the rules of court, to conduct arrest at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
Hindi na applicable, hindi ba?
Yes, sir.
Paralimaliwanag sa kanila.
Yes, sir.
So, immediately, what you're telling us is you're filing cases against these people who are properly identified and properly ident- uh, positively identified, di ba?
Yes, sir, positively identified by a witness.
And properly identified.
And properly identified.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anymore? Okay, kana?
Uh, that's our updates, sir, on the investigation, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, sir, magalaxan niyo, balikan natin si Senator Galon, na fotol, dyan. Senator Galon, sir, uh, pasensya ka na, sir, we could not hear you. Please continue, sir, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to, to place on record the magnitudes of the money we are talking about here, which could, which could give rise to uh, to incidents such as this. And the, Mr. Ang, did you say that the gross bets is about one billion to two billion? Uh, is this per day, sir?
Per day, per day, honor.
Per day?
Per day, per day, per day.
Okay, one to two billion, basa po, approximately, can we say one and a half billion on the average per day? Gross bet, sama po ba yon?
Pwede, depende rin o kasi sa ano yon, sa araw-araw kasi malakas lang po pag-Friday sa- Saturday.
Oh, but uh, you're saying one to two billion per day?
Unless you want one point five na, one, one point six.
And this is, this is only for Lucky Eight or for the seven or for the eight licenses, Mr. Ang?
Pwes, sa amin lang po yon.
Sa inyo lang po. Ang kabuoan po kayo magkano. Uh, just rough estimate of the gross bets of the Isabong industry.
Well, ah, hindi ko, habi-satu serse la, pero kung titignamos 'yung serse la, pwede mo. Ma't uh, let's say po, kung five hundred million, sir, po'kinan?
Five hundred.
Seven hundred.
Five hundred million per day.
More or less yun?
Yes, alright.
Yes, sir, 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 excuse me, Senator Galon, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I may interject, no? Uh, kung gusto mo natin malaman 'yung kabuoan na, na pera dyan sa industri na yan, I think PagCor meron silang accurate data mamaya. You can share it with us, sir. So, please continue, sir. Eh, tanungin natin 'yung PagCor later. Alam nila 'yung, kung gaano, what is the percentage of Lucky Eight's uh, contribution to the overall revenue derived by, uh, derived from Isabong Industry? May data ang PagCor niyan?
Hindi po, nakapix ko kasi sila eh. Nakapix po sila na, uh, for every licensing and issue sila. Uh, obligado kami ng seventy-five million na minimum guarantee of uh, perm.
Yes, yeah, alam mo.
It's every year, dito sa twelve thousand five hundred and fifty.
Oo.
Eh, kami more than, so binabait namin, siguro more or less, one hundred and thirty-five million every, every time.
Sir, please continue, sir. Continue, continue.
Thank you very much, sir. So, if we're saying, uh, Mr. Ang, kung sinasabi po natin-
Uh, for every licensing.
Uh, obligado kami ng seventy-five million na minimum. One billion to two billion per day. Uh, how many days they operate in a month?
Thirty days, thirty-one days.
Thirty days, so-
Araw-araw po, meron po kami, lalo.
So, we are saying that uh, for, uh, kung thirty days po, di ko raw po ba compute. Per, per day, uh, is anywhere from one hundred billion to six billion. Uh, po, opo. Uh, so, uh, uh, per month, it's anywhere from thirty billion to uh, sixty billion, ganun po ba?
Or the sixty billion po.
How much?
A month.
A month? Is about sixty billion. Sixty billion. Magkano po ang inyong commission?
Well, five percent kinukuha namin, tapos uh, binibigay namin sa mga agent, two percent, tapos uh-
Just the gross mo na. At so, five percent of sixty billion is roughly three billion per month, ang commission ninyo?
Hindi po, ano yon eh, uh, five percent, uh, si, uh, sixty billion, three billion, more or less.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. Five percent of sixty billion is roughly thirty billion per month, ganun po ba?
Sixty, six, uh, sixty, six billion, three, three billion lang po yon, tapos minus.
Five percent, that's roughly thirty billion, thirty billion per month, ang-
Three, three lang, three lang po, three lang. Five percent na eh.
Five percent of sixty billion is thirty billion, right?
Three.
Uh, sorry, three, sir, I'm sorry, three, three billion. Yan po ang, ang, ang tinikita ng, ng franchisee dito.
Hindi po tinikita, may, may ano po eh, binibigay po, binabalik po namin sa mga agent, two or two point five, depende oh, binibigay namin sa kanila uli mga two or two point five. So, kung sa three billion, uh, kung alisin mo ka lahat eh, binibigay na ka gadyon, one point five na lang matitira, plus mga expenses pa, dalagay mong one percent, alisin mo ng one percent yon, more or less mga nasan, hmm, mga nine hundred, eight hundred na titira sa isang month.
Anyway, yes, uh-
Doon ako ganyan sa mga PagCor, sa mga ganyan, doon na binabait lahat.
Uh-huh, kaya po, eh, kung uh, kung tatlong billion ang tinikita ng Lucky Eight, baka po payat ang six hundred and forty million na sinasabi ng PagCor na kanilang income dito sa Isabong, di tin ko lang, uh, tatlong three billion per month, huh? Even assuming that uh, that, that uh, you incur expenses on this, six hundred and forty million uh, per month of revenue by PagCor is petance, is petance, is very small compared to the gross income of uh, of, of Lucky Eight. That's all that I am trying to point out.
Sir, Chairman, just to pursue lang.
Yes, yes.
But the calculation, I'm Sir Chairman. If five percent?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Senator Galon. I pursue ko lang 'yung point, you sa five percent. Five percent?
Yes.
For both entries or five percent for one entry?
Ang pinasabi 'yung both entries, uh, kaya nga without risk kami. Kung may kaya ng one million sa kabila, one million sa kabila, two percent, uh, two billion yon, minus five percent yon.
Uh, so, five percent sa both entries na?
Total, total.
Yon na 'yung gross. Do yung five sa one entry, another five for the other.
Pareho, pareho na si isa.
Pareho na yon. Thank you.
So, uh, well, kaya po, uh, well, that's why I'm just asking, 'yung gross uh, uh, per day, and from the testimony, it would appear that the gross income per representation and uh, uh, in the absence of any proof, uh, to the contrary, we accept that as the uh, number, as the gross income of each licensing. Uh, yun na po muna, uh, we, we would love to hear from the PagCor uh, on, on the exact amounts, but from, for the record, if we talk about three billion per month for Lucky Eight alone, even assuming that is the gross income, a six hundred and forty million per month na, na sinasabi po ng PagCor, mukhang payat at uh, marahit talaga, tinikita ng industriya, kaya po, uh, hindi maiwasan, uh, imo ageritong pangyayari related doon sa tinikita ng industriya. Maraming salamat, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Great, sir, introduction.
Yeah, ang sabi ng PagCor kanina, I was taking notes from April to, ito 'yung last year. Parang ang average na remita sa PagCor, four hundred million per month.
How much, how much?
And then for last year, uh, from April, I think hanggang December, parang average, four hundred million pesos per month ang remitans.
Hmm.
Okay, January to date, nag-increase ito sa six hundred and forty million per month. Okay.
Noon pong April, three, Lucky Eight pa lang po ang maandar. Yung mga iba, uh, sunod-sunod pa lang, at nabuulang 'yung uh, seven, na ngayon six na lang.
From April, I was taking notes from April.
November, December.
Okay.
Pero po-
Wait, ma'am, eto, sendali ma'am. Parang- So, six hundred and forty million pesos per month, 'yung January to date, ito 'yung average niyo per month?
Opo, sir.
Ngayon, sabi kanina ni Mr. Charlie Ang, 'yung kanilang remita, sumabot, pinahamalaki sila eh, umabot sila ng one hundred and thirty-five million pesos per month. Lucky Eight pa lang yon.
Opo.
If we compute 'yung six others, kasi ang threshold, 'yung minimum nilang kailang remit is seventy-five million each. Okay, so six times seventy-five, that's four hundred and fifty million, plus one hundred and thirty-five, plus five hundred and eighty-five million pesos per month. Ang ibig sabihin, nasa threshold lang 'yung anin, kasi from six forty million na pesos per month compared to five hundred and eighty-five, masyadong minimum 'yung nire-remit ng ibang operators, ibang licenses, because Lucky Eight alone, one hundred and thirty-five million pesos per month na. So, masyado yatang-
Sir.
Ang doon na sila sa threshold, the six others, totoo ba ito?
Opo, ganito po kasi, sir. Ang Lucky Eight na gross bets ng from April twenty twenty-one to January twenty twenty-two, five hundred-
Ma'am, excuse me.
Five hundred.
Pakilapit 'yung kuwan mo, 'yung may groupon kasi hindi na record.
Ang gross bets po ng Lucky Star from April twenty-one to uh, January twenty twenty-two, five hundred forty-six billion, eight hundred twenty-six million, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine. Yung pong sumunod, 'yung Belvedere Corporation, eighty-six billion as compares sa five hundred forty-six nila, seven hundred seventy-one million, fifteen mil, fifteen thousand eight hundred four. Yung pong susunod, 'yung Esports Encuentro, three billion, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, six, six hundred twelve mi- mi- six hundred thirty-eight million, six hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred eighty-five pesos. And Home Design Coasters, um, susunod na malaki sa Lucky Star, ninety-six billion, five hundred seventy-six million, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-one. Yun pong sumunod, 'yung Jade Entertainment, hundred forty-five million, three hundred fifty-seven, four hundred four thousand. Yung New Win Coasters, one billion, two hundred five thousand, two hundred nineteen, uh, two hundred five million, two hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred eighty-three. Yung Hong Philippine Cocking International, six billion, eight hundred fifty-six million, two hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-four. Etto pong Golden Buzzer na na-suspended na ngayon kasi hindi nila magmit 'yung seventy-five million, seven hundred forty-six million, three hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred forty-one. Katulad po nung sinasabi ni Mr. Ang kanina, yun po kanilang gross na three billion. Sinasabi po niya na may percentages silang binibigay sa ibang papango government offices, pero lang po sa PagCor. Sa PagCor po, dahil nga bago ito, initially, pinagpo namin twelve thousand five hundred per fight ang aming chinacharge, or seventy-five million per month minimum guarantee fee, whichever is higher. So, yun po ang, pwede po naming isubmit ito. Talaga pong pinakamalaki, almost ninety percent po, uh, ang ano, ang uh, Lucky Eight.
Sir, ilan percent, ilan percent?
Uh, ko-compute ko na, sir, para sigurado.
Ah, sige, sige.
So, ma'am, walaki 'yung planong taasan 'yung ano, threshold?
Meron po, sir. Ang uh, ang binabalak po namin ay taasa siguro po 'yung per fight. Kasi kung tataasan pa po namin 'yung threshold na seventy-five million minimum guarantee, magiging monopoly po eh, dahil 'yung mga nakauna, malalaki na talaga, at kaya po yon. Yung mga iba na maliliit pa, na naging struggle, and they're trying to enter the business, hindi po nilang makayanan, kaya automatically, hindi po sila makakasali. Yun po ang aming uh, dior, ayaw po namin ang may monopoly or may by-nopoly or something.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Senator Tolentino, you have the floor?
Yes, uh, just last, last question addressed to our uh, electronic money issuers, EMI's. Uh, dito ang PayMaya, and dito ang G-Cash. Napapag-usapan na natin konti't on detalye. Magkano po ang kinikita per day, per month ng G-Cash dito sa, sa Isabong? Uh, ganun din ang tanong ko sa PayMaya. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good, good morning, Mr. President.
You are PayMaya or G-Cash?
I am from G-Cash, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
I am Attorney Gilbert A.S. Fotos from G-Cash, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I don't have the, any exact figure uh, to answer the question, Your Honor. I, I, I-
Excuse me, Tony. Uh, may request dito nga, kung pwede eh, garbo lang dating eh, may harangaman tayo. Tagal mo muna 'yung, ano, apag nagsalita.
I apologize, Your Honor.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't have the exact figure, uh, Your Honor, to answer the question of uh, the honorable Senator Francis Tolentino. But I am willing to submit to the Senate Committee the, the documents that would answer the question, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, after the break, we can ask the representative of G-Cash to provide us the figures he can call. Uh, he can ask his uh, superiors, how much?
Yes, we can do that.
Income. The same is true with PayMaya. PayMaya is willing to divulge the figures right-
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Uh, I also cannot give you the specific uh, data, no? But I understand that PayMaya only on-boarded or accredited uh, this Isabong uh, uh, licensee as of February this year. But uh, after the break, Your Honor, I will consult and uh, maybe they can provide the data needed by this committee.
So, also, also, G-Cash, can you provide after the break? Kaya mo? Kasi kaya mo doon ng, ng PayMaya, ng G-Cash?
Can I ask for at least one day, Your Honor? I, I don't think I can-
Okay, pa si Mr. Ang na-provide, ikaw, nahirapan ka mag-provide.
So, Mr. Chairman, siguro isama na rin natin 'yung gener- uh, income generated from international uh, bettors sa G-Cash and PayMaya.
Yes, uh, we can do that. But would you say, uh, Senator Galon, na income generated from uh-
Chair, the percentage generated by PayMaya and uh, G-Cash coming from international bettors, offshore bettors?
Sir, uh, sir, uh, Senator Tolentino, what we are regulating in PagCor and the figures I gave to you are based only on local bets. No, not one of the operators is licensed to accept offshore betting.
Pero ma'am, maraming tumataya sa-
Players.
Opo. Example yun natin.
Illegal po yon, sir, yun po 'yung binomon-
Tumadaan sa EMI's, tumadaan sa, sa G-Cash, et cetera. So, can we have a figure? We're not, we're not saying that you're tolerating it.
We're not saying that uh, you're violating something. We're, we're, we are just asking the electronic money issuers, the non-bank financial institutions, if, if they can provide us a figure of how much uh, percentage uh, they are generating from bets coming from overseas. Ilan ang po, Mr. Chairman, hindi natin pinag-uusapan kung minag-violate o inaallow, hindi po yon.
Okay, uh, PayMaya promised after the break, you can, we can have it.
I will consult, Your, Your Honor.
Okay.
And if they give it to us, I will provide the committee.
Okay, then uh, G-Cash, uh, tomorrow, one day.
May we ask for a reasonable time to comply, because uh, I think it would take-
Kaya nga, what is reasonable for you?
Three to five days, Your Honor. We'll just admit the-
Weekend na yon, masyado matagal yon. Ma- mahirap ba mag-compute si Mr. Ang? Mahirap nga eh, everything is uh, computer-generated, di ba?
We'll ask our office, Your Honor.
Kaya nga na PayMaya after the break eh. Kasi every day is computer, pindot, pindot ka sa computer, lang dyan na yan.
I will, I will try to ask the office, Your Honor.
So, kailan, uh, kailan?
A day, Your Honor.
A day? So, tomorrow, we are expecting na tomorrow?
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh, thank you. Uh, PayMaya after lunch, after break?
Yes, Your Honor. We are consulting them right now.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So, uh, continue, continue.
Before we go on a break, uh, it will be an executive session in the presence of uh, Mr. Charlie Ang?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to ask, uh, for the record, Mr. uh, Charlie Ang, yesterday you went on YouTube, it way went uh, semi-viral, uh, with you saying that uh, mahirap dito, ang daming mga politiko na kay kialam, uh, dito sa mga investigation. Are you referring to this panel or the personalities present here? Kasi mag, makakaharap ka namin sa tanghalian, tapos masama palang ang loob mo sa amin, so kami ba 'yung lumalaba sa YouTube na galit ka, na di umano, may mga, maraming politiko na uh, hindi ko mahaba 'yung YouTube mo eh. Uh, are you referring to us, just for the record?
Uh, pwede ko po ma-makita 'yung YouTube yon, uh, kasi baka interpretation yon lang yon. Uh, hindi ko alam mo sinasabi niyo, Your Honor.
Lumabas po 'yung kahapon, at uh, di umano ay mahaba 'yung sinabi mo, it was yon to me. So, perhaps you can ask, ask your colleagues, whoever uh, videoed you there, uh, baka it was, it was taken in your off-moment time na galit ka sa mga naging investiga. So, yun lang ang gusto ko maliwanag.
Your Honor, ang kasalita mo sa amin.
Kung wala ka maalala, galit ka ba sa amin?
Hindi po ako pwede magalit, mga kaibigan ko eh, may mga pinagsamaan po tayo, masiba paano eh. Ba't ako magagalit? Your Honor, tsaka, wala po ako nilalaba sa video, ang huling-huling video ko, 'yung huli nga na, sinisita ko na, na napahuli ako sa mga NBI at saka CIDG. Yon ay isang i-explain ko mamaya, na nagtetret daw ako. Hindi ako nagtetret eh, nagtetret ako dito sa mga, 'yung mga, eh, ang dami na namin napahuli eh, sa NBI at saka CIDG. So, so in short, hindi ka galit sa amin, ha? Impossible, okay? Lahat ko, kaibigan ko. Thank you, thank you, hindi ka galit, but uh, please, review that uh, video dahla, uh, ang dating kay Senator Tolentino, kasi is medyo galit ka sa mga politiko na naging investiga nitong incidente na ito. Well, for uh, for your information, uh, alam mo, break kami ngayon, uh, Mr. Atong Ang. Break kami ngayon, sinado. Pero kami, gumawa kami ng initiatibo na mapagbigyan talaga 'yung kahilingan ng mga pamilya ng thirty-four na nawawalan tao, na maghihikanda kami ng hiring. Kaya, uh, sana huwag mong personalin 'yung uh, aming pagkagandak ng hiring. Tabaho lang po ito. kaya uh, sana huwag mong personalin 'yung uh, aming pagkagandang ng hiring, tabaho lang po ito uh, wala perssonalan, kaya sana huwag, hindi ka magalit sa amin, ha?
Your Honor, gusto-gusto ko nga para maklear na mo amin. Gusto-gusto. Tsaka, never ako magalit sa politiko, kasi lumakin ako na puro politiko rin sa amin actually, may mga pinagsamahan nga, tayla, mas kapana, bat ako magagalit, wala namang masasabi sa pagkatao ko.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, uh, by the, Sir Lito Rapi Miguel?
Uh, 'yung sasabihin ba ni Mr. Ang sa executive session? Hindi mo kaya sabihin dito sa open session? Andyan, parang naririnig tayo ng Regional Director ng NBI, baka may informasyon siyang makuha roon andyan namang si, Director ng CIDG, di ba pwedeng sabihin mo na lang 'yun sa open session?
Kung pwede ko po sabi, uh, basta pinag-ano niyo ako sabihin ko sa open, okay na 'yun na suggestion ko lang po, pwede sabihin mo na sa inyo, saka 'yun sabihin sa akin kasi baka normal eh, at isingila ako na advice.
Hindi, ganito eh, uh, ang sasabihin mo are some facts na alam mo, some opinion basta magtalang manira ng tao na openly libelous na ano, so ano masama, di ba? Hindi ka na masasadya na sisiraan mo 'yung tao na walang kabisis-bisis, so kasi uh, I'm sure marami interesado kung ano sasabihin mo, di, sabay-sabay lang marinig ng lahat ewan ko, hindi, uh, I'm sure the si chairman namin is accommodating your request and dinag-request ka, kasi may agam-agam ka na, kung baka hindi mo pwede sabihin in open session pero kung kaya mong sabihin in open session, I suggest, wag na tayo mag-executive session, open session na, oh.
Guguluho, guguluho talaga, mas maganda.
Okay, sige, uh.
Ah, may request na 'yun.
Guguluho talaga.
The, the, the chair uh considers uh your uh point ma- pakinggan ka namin in uh executive session.
Anyway, 'yung tanong ko, wala namang right or wrong answer, opinion, yun 'yung position, okay? Sige, sige, so, while last, back, magbi-break na ba kami, Sir Chairman? Tanungin ko lang si Police Major General Cruz na CIDG.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, na, I'd like to congratulate him, kasi meron na mga tinatawag na breakthrough, sir, no? Maybe work ng predecessor mo pa'to, pero you were part of this. Six already identified, sabi mo fourteen suspects doon sa Mani- Mani- Manila Arena aduno, nakalimutan ko 'yung date nitong event, ano ang sabi mo, sa basement sila, uh uh, January thirteen case, is that the case number one? January thirteen, huh? Pero po mga security guards po't all hat, more or less 'yung fourteen?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh, they are all uh part of the security.
Security, di ba, so, uh, siguro alam natin na hindi pa'to is close, dahil mukhang mga na utusan lang po 'yan, hindi po, I'm sure, hindi pa 'yan ang mastermind, tama ba Police Major General?
Okay, we are, uh, right now, sir, we are just basing our actions on the testimony of a witness
Correct, huh.
And other evidence at hand.
Yeah, ako lang, ita- ito lang pakiramdam ko, medyo malayo-layo pa ito uh na matapos because imagine fourteen security guards adopting uh, three, six, six, no? Six people, doon sa case number one.
Yes, sir.
Fourteen security guards, bat naman kaya nila gagawin 'yan, so napag-utusan lang, uh, there must be some uh higher uh power or higher uh person or authority uh above the security guards, tinatawagin na lang nating mastermind, so uh, that is just uh, uh, the feeling I have, so I hope that you pursue that possibility, no? That this, this does not stop at the security guard level.
Yes, Your Honor, that's always the course of our investigation in CIDG. When we investigate uh crime, we uh make sure that uh everything is uh checked and uh magaya nga po ng kasabihan, we will leave no stone unturned in the, the investigation.
Thank you, anyway, uh, Sir Lito Rapi Miguel, the, the management of Manila Arena is also invited, andito, di ba? Um, sec, the manager of Manila Arena?
For the record, sir, we have invited them.
Okay, so andito sila?
Check, sir.
Okay, thank you, so from here, uh ma'am, siguro mas maganda mamaya na kayo na may pagbigyan after the break, kain muna tayo okay lang sa inyo, kain na tayo la, um, sec, please uh, bigyan na pagkain 'yung mga resources, persons natin, habang nag-break tayo mag uh, habang kami executive session sa loob with uh Mr. Ang.
Yes, sir, will comply, sir.
Okay, thank you, so ten minutes, sir, ten minutes? Okay, uh, the hearing is suspended for uh ten minutes.
How to uh witness this uh executive session?
Si, uh, sobokan doon natin na, Sir Lito Grace po, kung maka. Ma'am, siguro mas.
The technicians can make sure that we participate uh because uh, in fact, I raised the issue, why should we have an executive session? Uh, this has affected whole national security, uh I think we can have it in open hearing rather than executive session but I'm waiting to defer to the uh ruling of the chair uh so long as all of us are able to participate as proposed by Sir Atolpo.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, uh, according to the technical committee, okay na 'yun we, you can be accommodated, uh, ginagawa naman natin 'yan, ginagawa natin dati.
Yes.
Uh, pinadalhan na daw kayo ng link, sir, para pumasok doon uh, pakipasok na lang, pakijoin na lang, sir, may link na daw, pinadalhan sa inyo. Okay, sir?
Thank you.
Sige, thank you, sir, thank you.